So I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, June 7th, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Quisenberry. Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Ms. Wilkins?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next up is public input. Does anyone wish to address this special meeting of the Urbana City Council? I see one hand Evelyn Underwood, Dr. Underwood? Dr. Underwood, did you wish to speak? You're muted if you do.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, you are now. We can hear you.
Yes, as I forestated because of emergency, I was late getting on and I was going to speak to the other issue. But you're saying that we have to speak to that issue next week?
You can speak to whatever you want to during this four-minute period.
Oh, do it. You mean I have four minutes during this period?
Yes, you do.
Uh, to speak. Okay, I'm kind of out of breath. I had several things that I wanted to talk about. And I'm sorry, I didn't get an opportunity to hear what the other individual had to say. But I believe I'm not fraud defunding the police. But I'm for taking some of that money to utilize for mental health assistance and the like. Additionally, I'm understanding in checking, in talking with people in other parts of the country. I know we're different in Urbana. I'm not trying to change us to anyone else, but I know that there are a lot of individuals getting, changing the curriculum for the training. I know we go through the institute out there and I haven't actually been through it myself, but I've talked to people who have. And I've seen information and I think it would be a good idea to look, take a look at the curriculum for training and see what needs to be changed. Even the best of things, which I'm not saying it is, we need to sometimes take a look at it. But given what's going on in the country and our community, we need to take a look at maybe the curriculum for training. And as I say, I'm not defunding, but we need to reallocate some of the funds for for other areas. The police cannot do everything. I think I've mentioned that when we were talking about the SROs. They are not councilors. They do a good job in what they do. There was a presentation made the other night on the Zoom just this past week on some things, which I'm not able to do a lot like I used to do, but there are people who are well able to take a look at what's going on and see what needs to be changed and bring it to the body. And the intelligent people, this is the University of Illinois. We got all kinds of people here. A premier university and seemingly they're not doing what they need to do. I was on a Zoom two or three weeks ago. Where the systems person was talking about what they were doing in the money's allocations through the universities and what's going on in Chicago. And but some of that needs to be going on here. Assist the police, assist what's going on with these young people, this shooting and all of that. We not, you can't be blind to that. We cannot be blinded that people are afraid. And we shouldn't be fearful of the police and we shouldn't be fearful of our children. Something got to give, city council people. Some, we got to look at reallocating. That's some intelligent people, more intelligent than I ever be. But I can pray that they make the right decision and try to come up with something to change. And before my time run out, I don't know if the city council is going to start meeting in person, since Champagne is meeting in person. But right now, if one has to go over there to the council, I mean to the building, you got to call in. And then they got to come out and help you. I'm handicapped. There was not a chair or anything for me to sit. Somebody had to take me because I can drive. We need to take a look at what we do and how we don't think about people who have handicapping conditions. We come to the city, the building and, and for important information, important thing, and there's not a chair out there for us to sit. I'm on a walker and there might be other people on a cane or something. Please take a look at that. And I'm, my time might be almost up, but I'm going to stop with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's a hand up. It's a phone number ending in 277.
And they've un- unmuted. So now, yep, looks like they got it, star six.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Katie Muir. I'm sure you know who I am. I have sent a myriad of emails to you starting when I received a displacement letter posted to my door at 206 East California Avenue, number four. I am listening to this meeting and I am astounded. I am astounded that citizens of Urbana are yelling at the wind. I am astounded that we have a city council that is reactive instead of proactive. We have just gotten another letter from Danielle Chatawitz Cunningham Township blaming the previous owners who sold this apartment building, blaming everybody except taking some personal responsibility. You call in for maintenance, she blames her maintenance people. She blames the people citywide for not emptying the dumpster. She blames somebody for not cutting the grass. Cunningham Township was in no way prepared to become a property manager, much less someone helping make a transition of displaced people. I have emails continually questioning her. Do you have our rental files? Are you in a position to even give us a rental reference? No answer. No answer, no answer, no answer, and continual letters saying we are refusing to cooperate. And I am so angry, I didn't want to call in here because I'm like, this is unbelievable. There's hundreds of thousands of COVID-19 emergency solution grants. There's money to help these problems. Why isn't anyone doing anything? Why are we left out here yelling at the wind to people who just sit there and go out this hundreds of thousands of money to solve these problems with no oversight, zero oversight? And you have citizens pleading for your help, pleading you. They're going to become homeless. They are homeless. Those, those stressors, it's COVID-19. You want to pretend COVID-19 is over. You're going to open up the city council, but yet you, you don't mind taking the COVID-19 grants? So why do you think people are so confused right now? I, I just can't even believe this is all going on. I was never involved in politics, ever. Listen, I didn't even know who was on the city council. I didn't even know there was a Cunningham Township Board. And, and I keep trying to get answers and I get these responses that are nothing but insulting. And we're all trying to get answers and nobody will help us.
Thank you. Um, next up is Haki.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Draykar Haki, recent graduate of the University of Illinois, now a grad student in the master's of public health program. I didn't come prepared. I usually don't, but the person before me moved me in such a way that I have to speak on homelessness and whatnot. And I wonder if that, I heard that side, but it's okay. I'm not, I'm going to ignore that. We know that the violence has increased drastically in Champagne. And it's not due to, it's not because of a culture of poverty that white America likes to parade around. It is the material conditions of our people. It is a material conditions of society that allow for violence. When we're talking about material conditions, we're talking about housing. We're talking about food. We're talking about security. We're talking about education. We're talking about so much more than just a tax income break or how much money you make. There's so much more. As Dr. Underwood stated, transportation, the lack of transportation plays a major role in the structural violence that the system of white supremacy has perpetuated. There's a lot to be done. It is very, very unfortunate that the caller before me clearly pointed out that we are moving in a direction as if Urbana and Champagne, as if the world has moved past COVID-19 pandemic. But you all are still taking funds regarding COVID-19, but not actively redistributing those funds regarding COVID-19 to the people that are in dire need of those funds. I believe, again, I try to give you all the benefit of the doubt and try not to believe that there are insidious ways. But I know that individuals and institutions operate interdependently. You all work together. It works at the same time, but you all work by itself as well. I hope that especially the new members of Urbana City Council will work to ensure that these funds are distributed, that the wealth is redistributed to the people, especially when in regards to housing. Champagne County only has a document of 142 to 150 homeless individuals. There are school, there are apartment buildings for U of I students, the privilege, that sit empty. Latitude can possibly fit the entire homeless population here. You are lucky. We are not like white folks and will not commit a January 6th and run up homeless people into these apartment complexes and actively house them and feed them, even though that is something I would love to do. Yeah, they do it. They're doing it in other areas of the country. They're doing it in Oakland. But it's crazy, white folks can run up in Capitol Hill, the, the seat of this white hair and vogue democracy, leave unscathed. And we still have homeless people out in the streets and white, white people are homeless too. So we all in the same boat, but we only got one person rolling, black folks rolling. Been black folks been rolling. Been at the Vanguard of the Revolution since 1619, since 1492 here in, in the Americas and the Western Hemisphere. So please, 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 I'm tired of begging. I'm not even going to beg no more. We don't take the power because that's what it is. It's about people's power. Either you stand on the side of history, on the, you know, history in terms of the people, of those who are the oppressed, or you continue to stand on the side of the oppressor. As Dr. King, not the whitewashed version, said, "The urgency of now." It is now time, more than ever, to actively fight against the systems of racism, homophobia, heteronormativity, capitalism, imperialism, colonialism. Homelessness is a product of systemic oppression. It is a product of structural violence and structural racism. And I end with this, black women, single mothers with children who are fighting, who are actively fleeing from domestic violence and LGBTQ identifying youth are the two growing populations. Look at that structural violence and structural racism for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Alan Max Axelrod.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alrighty. So my name is Alan Max Axelrod. I am the campaign lead of No Amateur Shutoffs, Zero Dollar All Volunteer Grassroots Coalition, a 48-member organization that's accounting Spain, the state of Illinois, north and southeast and west. We have won forest and utility shut-off moratoriums so far, and we have won an open-ended utility disconnection avoidance program that has spent over $115 million to help over 115,000 households keep their utilities on. This has resulted in this past week being the best week in terms of the lowness of our coronavirus cases since March of last year. Despite the efforts that we had done, there were efforts to subvert it. And I know a lot of people have uncomfortable feelings because they may not have understood pandemic policy. I'm not actually referring to that. I'm referring to, of course, one of the reasons why we had a summit this past Saturday for something we will later call a progressive accord. We're victims of psychological abuse by the state, our revolution board member, by the chair of our revolution downstate, Georgia De La Garza, who used misinformation in our community, which is largely responsible for the QAnon conspiracy theory circulated by Danielle Chatawitz and Carol Ammons. Her victims were provided testimony in front of many others for the first time ever being heard. These folks have been isolated. They had had their trust weaponized against them. They have specific traumas in connection to how they have been treated. And when we brought attention to this community of some of the professional misconduct of people acting in league with Georgia De La Garza, knowing that she was subverting democratic processes like Danielle Chatawitz, who was a former boss of mine, who knows my communication information, and yet there was some very subtle misdirection of communication that was later weaponized that is likely attributable to her, that occurred right after I had given Georgia De La Garza her phone number. It is time for you to believe people. When folks are saying that they are not being heard, I don't know the specific situation of the tenants at this property, but I know Danielle. And the thing about people who are manipulative and insufficiently helped by therapy is that they will seem like the nicest people in the world. When we talk to people about Georgia De La Garza and they don't know about the victims, over two dozen testimonials were presented. And this is something that has become a statewide structural issue that is being recognized against the attempts of progressive branded people. That is wrong. So while these folks are talking about their issues with their housing stability, I urge you to listen to them. Yes, this is not the township board meeting, as Danielle had brought up at a past public comment. That is irrelevant. You are public servants. This is a space for you to be heard and in general comments. Indicator, there is a person who literally gives public comments on inane things because it is his right and duty. And people who say that you should not be giving those kinds of comments in this space are derelict at best in their understanding of people's rights in this community. And how they protect themselves is none of their business. It is time for Champagne, Urbana to be a place that supports survivors of all kinds of abuse. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next up is Bo David Barber.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, thank you. I'm Bo Barber. Um, I don't live in Urbana. I'm out in Ogden. But I go to university, PhD student, and this is the Champagne, Urbana metro area. So what kind of goes on here also kind of concerns me is, you know, it concerns me meant like I, I'm concerned about what's going on here. The one thing I just kind of wanted to say was with opening up all this stuff and kind of lessening of COVID protections is that, you know, people, people still get sick. There's still people that aren't vaccinated, although CU PhD and activists like Hitting Homeboy have, organizations like Hitting Homeboy have like done a lot to help people get vaccinated. And, you know, but the virus is still out and it's all across the state and people are traveling. One of the people who got COVID is my soon-to-be two-year-old niece, Lily, otherwise affectionately, affectionately known as Lily Junebug. She's doing fine. But she got it when she was at daycare and she's doing good. Her parents are both doing good. They were both fully vaccinated. And it was kind of surprising though because they ended up getting symptoms. My sister's husband kind of got, had like a bad cold, lost a little bit of like his taste and smell. Wasn't too bad. My sister, though, described it as like the worst cold of her life and it kind of just knocked her on her butt for like the whole week. And she's still sort of like recovering. She's doing better now. Thank God, both, all three of them are. But it's, you know, like it's, she ended up testing negative, which I find surprising because she had loss of taste, loss of smell temporarily. I don't, I don't know. Who knows what's going on? But the thing is, is that people still get it. Two-year-olds can get it. And there's still not a conclusive thing of what the long-term effects are for children and for anybody in general, but also it just sort of like, it's my two-year-old niece. She's, she's absolutely, she's a beautiful young baby and just, or toddler now. And, you know, I just, it, it worries me. So, I mean, you know, Lily, they live up in Northern Illinois. They're not residents of Urbana, but I'm sure there's a lot of two-year-olds up there who are just as precious as to me, as to others, as Lily is, as my niece Lily is to me. But, you know, just with the decisions that you're making, I, you know, you're going to do what you're going to do. I'm just some podunk kid out in the boon docks of the county, but just, I just thought it might be a good reminder of just being conscious of what decisions you're making in regard to COVID policy. And I don't know. It is what it is, I guess. But on, on the topic of also being conscious about like decisions you make, it's important to, it's important to address systems. And I don't want to just kind of sound like a broken record, seeming like a repeat of what everyone else is saying. But like, if you try and address the problems of violence with just police, it's kind of like you're trying to put, in my mind, a Band-Aid on a burn wound on somebody who's still trapped in a bonfire or somebody that fell into a bonfire. I've seen people have that before. Oh God, you don't know what that happened. Putting a Band-Aid on that's not going to solve the problem. And it's also like, it's a reactionary thing that we're doing here. Maybe we could put up some guards around the bonfire. Or maybe we could keep, you know, maybe we could keep Tim or whoever's getting drunk at the bonfire, away from the bonfire. So instead of giving funds to the police, maybe we can invest in things like Courage Connections. Because I'm like, I don't know, like the one speaker pointed out earlier, the police didn't even use up all that money. I mean, just like doing the math on this, y'all. I don't know. I'm frustrated. Y'all have a good, y'all have a good night.
Thank you. Next speaker, Eddie Pratt Jr.
Hi again. Am I coming through clear?
Yes.
My name is Eddie Pratt Jr. I am an Urbana resident. I am the creator of the CU Human Rights Coalition. And I'm also a member of the CU DSA. I hope what you heard tonight keeps you awake. I hope that what you heard tonight gives you just a, a little sliver of what millions of people across this country are feeling right now. What people in this very community are feeling right now. The feeling of walls closing in. The feeling of not being able to get help where you're told you're supposed to be able to get help from. We heard that situation tonight. We've heard of the system failing people, of falling through the cracks. I am one of those people. Gun violence is something that was a part of my entire childhood growing up in Detroit in the 90s. It is a terror that I don't wish on my worst enemy. To grow up at war is not something that anyone should ever have to experience, yet millions are. I hope that it makes your morning coffee a little, a little bit more bitter. And that you decide to use your platform to invoke change, positive change, substantial change, long-lasting change. Equity, justice, these things are all woven into this moment. You've heard more than a dozen people take time out of their day to talk to you, to tell you that the community needs things. You have the opportunity to provide it. So it's my hope that you will join us who are out here, who are hurting, who want a better community for everyone here, who doesn't want to relive trauma over and over. That you are willing to invest in that, that you are willing to partner with the community in that, that you are your brothers and your sisters' keepers. Anything short is quite honestly the complete opposite. When history is written on these days, what will it tell about you? That you upheld the same patriarchal, capitalistic system that begets this very suffering that we are all subject to in our community right now? Or that you took a stand, that you saw an opportunity and you used everything that you could for the betterment of the people around you? I hope that that stays on your mind, because it stays on mine. So, good night.
Thank you. Next up is Julie Watkins.
I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't have further to say this week.
Okay. Let me check the list. It looks like everyone who wished to speak has spoken. Does anyone else want to address the special meeting of the Urbana City Council? Okay, then we'll move on. Normally on the council agenda, there's, this would be the point where we have council input and communication. And I think we should go ahead and do that. It's not, it's not listed on the agenda, but that's where it should go. So if it's okay with you, is there anybody on the council who wanted to provide input or communication at this point? Sharice?
I guess I, I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Okay. I guess what I want to, want to say is that I, I hear what everybody's saying. And particularly regarding the, the gun violence that seems to perpetuate throughout, at least by my ward or close to it, because Throughout, um, at least by my ward or close to it because it's in Champaign. Um, which is two blocks over. Um. And what I want to say as well is I was listening to Linda Turnbull and um. Uh Eddie Pratt Jr., Reverend Underwood. I really. Am. Bewildered. Uh, as to how. Or to what, what the, some of the first steps could be cameras, uh what Linda was saying, where is a great idea. I agree and I, I know because cameras don't lie and if, if there's a, a camera. Uh, that is in our, in our neighborhood, that is a city, a city owned thing. Uh, that way, we have the surveillance that's needed for a lot of these issues. The other thing I wanted to say is that, um, yeah, people are scared. And no one should be afraid to walk down the street of their own neighborhood, especially when they've lived in this neighborhood for sixty years. No one should be afraid to li- walk down the street. Um. Uh, I've been approached by. A couple of police officers that want to organize a neighborhood watch. And I would very much like to hear, I've, I've put out what I could on, on, on the War Three Warriors uh page. To try to get anyone that's interested, I think that of. The more that we take. And we participate in, in surveilling, not necessarily surveilling, but in protecting ourselves. The, the less likely that we will endure or have to endure this kind of violence that's been going on lately. And um. If anyone is interested in doing that and, and Linda, if you're still on, on, I hope you can pass the word better than I can. Um. Give me a call because we are interested in trying to get some kind of neighborhood watch going. Um, and that's all I have to say.
Okay. Does anyone else want to speak? Jaya.
I think Mary Alice had her hand up first.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to make a comment and really, it's actually a question for the mayor. So. People have talked about the, the COVID funds that are coming to the city approximately twelve million dollars and. Um, we haven't had a conversation yet. That twelve million is not included in this budget that we've been talking about. So is the plan to have a conversation with, um, with internal. With the council and the public in July? Do you have a rough estimate in terms of when that conversation will happen?
Yeah, I was going to give an update during the staff report, but I can do it now. Um, actually, the six, about um. Six and a half million is included in this year's budget and it's going to be set aside, it is set aside in the special fund. We received word um over the weekend that the money had been transferred from the treasury, so we have received. Six million four hundred eighty seven thousand two hundred eighty dollars. So that is now in our account. We're going to be, um, we want to hold some facilitated discussions with city council and the community this summer. To discuss how you want to allocate these funds. But the good news is the money is now in our um account. So, the, what we also received word from the US Council Conference of Mayors is that there are members of Congress who now want to claw back. The second part of the distribution, the second six and a half million dollars in our case. And put that money toward the infrastructure bill. So there's some fighting going on in Congress now about the second. Distribution of the ARC money, but at this point, most cities either have already received their first allocation or should be able to get it. So yes, we expect to do the facilitated, facilitated discussions, um, hopefully starting in July. But again, as I pointed out, we have time. Um, you know, you don't have to spend the money all this, you don't have to allocate it all this, you don't have to spend it all at once or all this year. So we have time to be thoughtful about how you want to spend it. And make sure we're putting it toward a use that'll have the biggest, uh, you know, the most effect. Got any two question? Okay. Uh, Jaya.
And I just wanted to hop on briefly and acknowledge the, the pain um that folks have been expressing. Um, I know it's not easy to continue to come back and have these conversations. Um, this is a time where we are still figuring out. I'm, I'm glad to hear that we've gotten that first portion of the funding. Um, I'm excited to see the work that's happening in our community around gun violence and look forward to hearing more. I know that that's something. That was mentioned that there's a, an interest in coming for um the council to talk more about some of those community efforts, but. Just wanted to, to, as always, thank um our public comments um for, for continuing to show up, continuing to talk to us. And to recognize that there is a lot of pain and a lot of fear in our community um that I know that we're dedicated to addressing. Um, but that it's, it's a process. Um, and I just can encourage you all to continue to reach out. Um, in whatever way feels right to you, whether it's email, whether it's public comment, um, however you feel right, um, connecting with us. It's, it's appreciated.
James and then Shandra.
I think Shandra was next.
Okay. I don't, I don't, uh, where's Shandra?
Hi.
There you are. Okay, Kai.
Um, so, uh, along with Jay, I wanted to thank everyone for their input. Um, I want to know that. Um, want everyone to know that we heard you, at least I did. Um, I hear that you're saying that police officers don't necessarily result in safer communities. I hear that we need more amenities to deter criminal behavior. Um, funding should be directed to mental health, affordable housing. Um, I heard homeless shelters, um, um, schools, and that does not include SROs. Um, and prevention and support programs. So, um, I, I just want to know, I heard you and I. Think that the budget should reflect those priorities as well. So I will be working with the rest of the city council and the city to make sure that. Um, those priorities are um funded as they should be. Thank you.
James.
I, yes, and thanks. I do, I do appreciate um the public coming out and talking. I, I wish we would see. More public comment. I, I think we need to see the, the whole of Urbana represented in our. Citizens coming out and sharing what they, what they would like to see, what their vision is for our community. I did want to mention that, uh, I mentioned this before, but a little more details. Um, the Silverheart Silverwood neighborhood is celebrating its fifth um anniversary uh this Saturday, uh, June twelfth. And it's going to be from one to four PM. Uh, the celebration is going to be on Votter Street between Silver and Mitchum. And uh, there's some more, more details coming, uh, but I hope uh people in Ward Seven and other parts of Urbana can come out and celebrate this neighborhood. Um, and the work they've done to uh, to focus on their needs. Thanks.
And Grace.
Yeah. Um, wanted to also thank the public for your participation and staying. So dedicated and vigilant in sharing your opinions and listening to all the meetings of council and the various commissions and just your involvement is definitely appreciated. Um, I was wondering how and when this input will be incorporated into the budget. Because it seems like, I don't know, it seems like a little late in this process. I would love to see public input and council input. Earlier on, I know there was some meeting with us before, but it's kind of hard if we don't have something to look at. Um, so maybe after comment, if you're willing to answer a question, I'm wondering how and when this would be incorporated into this year's budget from what we just heard from the public hearing. Or if there are other avenues of public input that we have. Um, because we've heard a lot of people from the public and on council who want more community resources, support, education and prevention programs. Um, at the cost of money from police funding, because that is part of community safety from the same, you know, idea of the goal and funding. Um, and I don't know that I see that truly reflected in the budget. I think that the one million to address structural inequity is a good start. Um, but I don't know that that's good enough. I would love to see those structural inequity um issues being addressed in just part of the systemic operations of the city and repairs. Just part of standard planning, um, and then plus extra money on top of that for community resources and programming. Um, like the ARP or this equity and quality of life project. Um, but I'd love to see these overall ideas of addressing systemic inequity, just being a part of what we do. And not um one extra step and kind of that's it. I'd love to see them both and wondering how this public input. Will be incorporated into this year's budget in that timeframe.
The um, just briefly, the most uh. Effective way to incorporate it into the budget this year is to focus on the ARC money, which is six and a half million dollars and the two million dollars that the council has. To allocate, allocate to the neighborhood infrastructure projects, which also can address some of the systemic um inequities throughout the city. So that's. That's a total of about eight and a half million dollars that you'll be having discussions about over the next year. That is a part of this year's budget. And then we also have an opportunity and I think an obligation to um. Collaborate with fellow neighboring governments and other agencies that are receiving American Rescue Plan funding because. You know, the issues that affect Urbana affect our neighboring communities and countywide as well. So there's. There's some opportunities to leverage the funds that each entity is getting to really make some fundamental and more permanent changes. So there's a great deal of opportunity. Um, to have an impact on expenditures this year. Um, any other council member comments? Okay, uh, the only items on the agenda for this special meeting are appointments to the Urbana Free Library Board. And those include reappointments of members Guadalupe Mayhab, John Thies and Michael Weisman. Um, they're all for terms ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Is there a motion for approval and um library director Celeste Choat is here if you have any questions? Sharice.
Yes, I'd like to move for the approval and reappointment of Guadalupe A. Mejia, John Thies and Michael Weisman.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I didn't hear who, what, who that was.
They said at the same time, jinx.
All right, how about, was that Shandra? Shandra? Go ahead, all right. Any discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
That motion passes. And the last item are the reappoint, is the reappointment for the Urbana Public Television Commission and these are terms ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. One change here is that Carolyn Skip, um, who is a Urbana Free Library employee, who is the representative to the UPTV Commission. Uh, actually needs to be appointed by the Urbana Free Library Board first before you appoint her to the UPTV Commission. So. The four people that you will be considering tonight are Peter Folk, Marie Polk, Mark Schultz and Dale Snyder. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move that we approve to the Urbana Public Television Commission, terms ending in June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, Peter Folk, Marie Polk, Mark Schultz and Dale Snyder.
A second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Any discussion?
Yeah, do we, the, here, when you look at appointments, do you look at? How long someone has served and have any thoughts about when it's time to? Give somebody else a shot at doing uh particular commission.
Um.
Board.
Sometimes, uh, well, if it's, if there's term limits, uh, absolutely. Um, generally though, the way the process has worked is we ask folks if they want to continue serving and because, you know, we have so many. Seats to fill that um we generally will, will accept their um request to continue serving.
Um, I would say that I would just like more information just about any decision that we're asked to make. You know, this is essentially just. A list of names and, you know, we kind of have to do our own research or happen to know people and. As much as I do understand that there are other people who know and trust them and have worked with them, it would still just be nice to have a little blurb about. I don't know, maybe the people's like strengths and why they're interested in staying and what the commission is about. There's. Little online, I know generally of the, um, you know, public television, but I just think more information is always appreciated when we're expected to make a decision.
Typically, when a person is appointed for the first time, um, we do bring more information, but when they're reappointed, it's, it's generally, you know, the, this process that we're following here. You can always um feel free to contact the staff members supporting the commission. Um, in this case, it would be Jason Liggett and um. Uh, for the UPTV Commission, if you needed information as well.
Uh, I.
Sharice.
I just wanted to say also, um, uh, Grace, that Celeste Choat, who is the executive director for the Urbana Free Library is. In on this meeting, if you have any questions for her regarding the uh. The uh Urbana Free Library Board, uh, feel free to, now's the time to ask. Um, having worked with the three people that we just reappointed and John Thies is the president of um, of the board. He's doing an excellent job. Guadalupe represents the, the library. Urbana Free Library in a capacity of uh regarding the Illinois libraries, I think. Celeste, you can correct me if I'm wrong. And Michael, more a lot, more or less like myself, um. Uh, but the trustee board does is determine in uh. The, uh, the budget for the library, not well, in some ways, but um. Uh, we approve bills, we did a lot of things like what we do with the Cunningham Township Board. Celeste, you want to step in? You want to say anything, Celeste?
I, is there anything that you need from me?
Well, we, we already voted on that.
Yeah, I know, but she wanted, she wanted information, so I just thought now's a part, uh, app, uh, uh, opportunity for her to get information.
Grace, do you appreciate that? Um, any information's definitely helpful. Um, but with this one we're looking at right now with um public television commission, I don't know if. There's, is a representative with a kind of quick.
Uh, Jason Liggett um could answer those questions.
Yeah, absolutely, Grace. I am uh the staff representative for the UPTV Commission, so happy to answer any questions that you have about the commissioners uh up for reappointment.
I guess just wondering what the, how the commission is involved in general too, like. I know there's a lot of staff also that do the day to day work, like are they advising on programming and scheduling, kind of the roles of the commission? And um maybe your insight to the reappointments, if you have any.
Yeah, so uh currently UPTV has one full time staff member and that is me, the station manager. And then we have an eighteen hour a week production assistant, Breama Rodrigo. Uh, works Thursday, Friday and Saturday from ten to four, does a number of production tasks uh both for the city. And also helping our public access members produce public access television. And then we have three part time camera operators. As you know, we have many boards and commissions uh in the evening hours. And uh, I'm not here every evening, so we have three part time uh camera operators that'll work on an as needed basis uh for those meetings. As far as the commission's concerned, the makeup of the commission is we have one representative from the Urbana Free Library, one representative. one representative from the Urbana School District, one representative from, uh, the Urbana Park District, and then we have, um, uh, at-large Urbana residents, uh, that are members as well. Uh, for the commission's, uh, members that are, uh, for reappointment, uh, the chair of the commission is Peter Falk. Uh, Peter Falk, uh, owns and operates of a low broadband, a, uh, uh, technology company in town, an internet provider in town. Uh, he's been the chair of the commission, I want to say, since, um, I know it's since Barbara Goddard, a longtime chair, stepped down, and I believe that was two thousand fourteen. Um, and he was started on the commission in two thousand twelve or two thousand thirteen. I don't have the exact dates. Um, Carol Inskeep is, uh, the current Urbana Free Library Board Representative, as, um, the mayor mentioned, she's not up for reappointment. Marie Polk is the UPTV membership, so that's one of the other representatives I failed to mention, is that the actual producers and, uh, public access members have a representative on the board. Marie Polk has, uh, been in that position, um, I want to say for a better part of a decade, maybe a little over a decade now. Uh, she produced a show called See You Mommy Connection on Urbana Public Television. She had both in-studio experience, so she, uh, had the experience of being at UPTV and working with our staff, but then she also had in-the-field, uh, production experience to where she would loan to, you know, take the cameras out of UPTV and, uh, have, uh, family or friends or, you know, other UPTV members film for her, uh, on location shoots. Um, Mark Schultz is the current representative for the, um, Urbana Park District. And then, uh, Dale Sender, this is a typo on here, it's not Snyder, uh, Dale Sender, uh, was a past, um, UPTV member. He's produced a number of, um, music concerts during his membership, um, on the board, and then, uh, also is, uh, has a vast technology, um, background, and that's why he's on the board. I'll also note, in, in addition to, um, the folks that you see before you, Chris Fuller, who, um, works with technology at Urbana Middle School, uh, is also on the board representing the Urbana School District. He's not up for appointment right now. And then we currently have two vacancies on the board that, uh, at-large Urbana residents. Uh, so if anyone in Urbana is interested in public access television, or media, or technology, and you or any of the other council members or any of the public watching, uh, know someone that would be interested or interested yourselves, you can always contact the mayor's office, um, uh, about applying to be on that commission. Uh, the, the general, uh, task of the commission, if you ever go back and watch the meetings, um, they, they get a lot of staff reports, uh, if there's any updates from the FCC, um, the, we kept them abreast of the Comcast franchise renewal that we recently renegotiated in January. Um, and then other things, if there's any, for any programming complaint, sometimes with public access television, uh, you know, you get a bunch of different viewpoints, and those aren't always popular viewpoints. So they might hear a complaint, uh, it was semi-regularly in the early two thousands. Our last, uh, significant programming complaint was in two thousand eight, um, and they, they had a lot of meetings during that time. They do meet quarterly. Um, I would say we meet, uh, you know, two to, two to four times a year, um, just because if there's not any pressing business, we don't always, uh, call, call a meeting for that.
Thank you so much for the information and for what you guys do and help and make it accessible.
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to help.
Thanks. Go ahead, James.
Um, Mayor Marlin, do, do you require a paper application for the board seats?
Uh, we do online.
Okay, but it is, there, there are a set number of things that people have to fill out to
Yes.
be considered. Um, I, I can tell you, I, I'm not going to do this very often, but I will tell you, um, in the, in the county board, same kind of process, people apply for sanitary districts, mental health board, all, all kinds of positions. Those applications are shared in the packet with the appointment, so that the basic information that someone has supplied with regard to their interest and their qualifications for the, for the board are available, and I think, I think that would have gone a long way, um, for, for new, uh, council members to have some context of who individuals are and what their, what their qualifications are, what their interest is.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we can do that for, um, new applicants. We don't require returning applicants to, you know, fill out an application again, and sometimes, and, and I'm not sure we have the applications from ten years ago or that sort of thing.
Uh, yeah, and I, and I do understand that it is a, it's an executive appointment. You, you are evaluating the applicants and selecting them and, and asking for our approval of that. Um, but I, I do, I, I would be one that would ask, um, if someone's serving a three-year term and they're trying to be re-upped for the three-year term, I do think they need to, to, to apply again. Do you think they need to, uh, you know, reinvest in, in the next term?
And I, okay, I hear what you're saying. Um, the other thing is, is that the, the, um, depending on the board and commission, the staff support for that commission also, um, they're, they're really the first line to evaluate the applications, to make sure people are qualified to serve on that particular board and commission, and then they make a recommendation to me. So, so I, uh, I depend on the staff um, in the department level, supporting those boards and commissions to make a recommendation.
Do we have a list of qualifications for those, for those seats, depending on the board?
Um, it depends on the board, you know, or the, um, it depends on the, uh, these are all citizens, these are all volunteers, and sometimes each board may have, as you heard with the UPTV Commission, they have to have a representative from a number of different agencies. Um, with the Farmers Market Advisory Board, there are specific areas with the Arts Commission, I believe there are some specific areas, so it depends on the, it depends on the board. But as far as specific qualifications, typically not. You know, these are volunteer advisory positions.
I think when I was appointed to the Urbana Free Library Board, the only qualification I had was living in Urbana at the time.
That's a basic.
And showing interest in, in being appointed to the board.
Yeah, I mean, that's a basic qualification, but, um, these are voluntary, these are, um, non-paid, you know, resident uh, boards and commissions advisory to the council and to the mayor, so. Okay, that, that, um, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. With no further business before this special meeting, we stand adjourned, and we'll move on to the committee of the whole.